Just like school.
Yeah.
Just waiting for the town manager. I'd like to call the Smithfield Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 17th, 2025 tomorrow, where no votes taken in executive session. We're not a spot we can clear out. Thank you, Ron. We pray that he will be providing us with wisdom and insight as we discuss our work and plans to make decisions about our future. So look to the flag.
My pleasure. The flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready to see evacuation and health notification, town manager.
In the event of an emergency, there's two exits out of the council chambers. One right behind you, when you leave, go off on that exit, they stay off to the right, lead you to front of the building. Second exit is to my right, that stairway leads, lead you to side of the building. In the event of an emergency, do not use the elevator. Ladies' room and men's room, directly out the exit to the back of the council chambers. Men's room to the right, ladies' room to the left.
Thank you. Presentation, probably most of you know in the room right here, Ajax is retiring. Today, we recognize the outstanding service by Lieutenant David Walsh and his K-9 partner Ajax. As Ajax will be retiring on June 30th, 2025. Lieutenant Walsh and Ajax began their careers in the Smithfield Police Department. K-9 team in October 2017 and graduated from the Rhode Island K-9 Academy. They quickly became vital assets to the town of Smithfield. Ajax has due responsibility, K-9 trained at both patrol and narcotics detection. His capabilities include building searches, crowd control, tracking, assisting in narcotic investigations. The skills that made him last, the impact of the police department. Over their eight years together, Lieutenant Walsh and Ajax were called upon again to support patrol functions in major narcotic cases, demonstrating professionalism, dedication, and unbreakable bond. We thank both of them for their exceptional service to the town of Smithfield.
My pleasure.
Well done, too. Lieutenant Walsh, would you come to the podium, please? With the dog.
My God, it scared me.
People don't realize how important a K-9 is to the police department, especially in today's world. And especially with narcotics and other things that we have in the town of Smithfield. So I kudos to you, Lieutenant, for doing this. I wish we could clone all the K-9 dogs that we've had in this town because it's a vital service. And for you, Ron, to take that is a kudos to you. So I'd like to present you with the town council on the town of Smithfield. I wish your extended heartfelt recognition to Lieutenant David Walsh and Ajax, providing eight years of dedicated service and courageous service as partners in the police department and K-9 team. Wishing Ajax a seamless transition from active duty to retirement. So, thank you.
Actually, right off the start, I would like to thank Debbie Wood, who's actually here tonight, her son Jason Wood, and Weeby Jim. And back in 2015, she approached Chief Richard St. Severe, and she wanted to reestablish the K-9 program in the town of Smithfield. She put the money where her mouth was because she actually purchased Ajax, paid for his initial training, and then paid for some of the equipment that we have used for the past eight years with Ajax. So like, kudos to Debbie and... And he's been a great asset. He's been an outstanding member of the police department. Not only detection and obviously tracking, one thing he has, and you can see it today, presence. So a couple of years back, we had an incident up at Bryan University. It was a basketball game. Got a little out of control. I believe it made it on ESPN. Well, Ajax and Dave were on duty. They went up there, and the crowd was a little out of control in the auditorium. When they were coming out, they were also out of control. Dave and Ajax put themselves in a position where we didn't want people, the crowd, to disperse to. And just, not that Dave doesn't have the presence either, but just the presence of Ajax, not barking, not growling, just standing there. The crowd went where we wanted them to go. So that, just that alone, among many other things that he's done for us, as a loyal supporter to the police department and obviously a partner to Dave, and I wish him well in retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Wood, would you come to the podium, please? You have to. You have to. Let your right hand swear to tell the truth. No.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the town council and the 22,000 citizens in Smithfield, thank you for putting your mouth where, your money where your mouth is and helping us with Dog Number Three, I believe. Is it Dog Number Three? Dog Number Three coming up, and we look forward to incorporating Dog Number Three at the town council meeting, Chief. Once we get him or her, and we'll make that announcement. But from all of us here, thank you for what you've done.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Item number six. Move the minutes of the May 20th, 2025 executive session, meeting held in pursuit of Rhode Island General Law, Section 42465A1. Personnel interview Peter Lomis, Joe Rotella, Richard Calavecchio, John Hart Daniel, for possible reappointments to the boards and commissioners in Section 42465A. Real estate potential acquisition or lease real estate property approved as recorded and sealed. Entertainer motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all is in favor? Aye, ayes ayes have it. Item B, move the minutes of the May 20th, 25 open session meeting to be approved as recorded. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all is in favor? Aye, ayes ayes have it. Item C, minutes of the May 28th, 2025 executive session, meeting held in pursuit of Rhode Island General Law, Section 42465A2, potential litigation to be approved and recorded as sealed. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all is in favor? Aye, ayes ayes have it. Item D, move the minutes of the May 28th, 2025, open session meeting to be approved as recorded. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all is in favor? Aye, ayes ayes have it. Item number seven, consider discussing act upon the following appointments, any reappointments. There are none. I'll go to item number eight, conduct a public hearing to propose fiscal year 2026. I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone like to come to the podium and speak on the issue?
Good evening. Richanatelli, 99 Dean Avenue, Chairman of the Smithfield School Committee. I have with me tonight, somewhere around here, is Superintendent Bart and also Melissa Devine, the Finance Director. And I'll have them come up at certain points in the discussion here. Superintendent will be mostly talking about the educational aspects of the budget and obviously the financial part. Ms. Devine will be talking about that. I would be talking about a couple of other items. One is the fund balance that we have and also our capital expenses. My main point is that the school department can't afford any cuts from the manager and budget board's recommendations that were put out earlier this year to either our operating or our capital budgets, including reallocating any base state aid that's out there right now. We got the manager's budget a few months ago, like all other departments did. And right away, the superintendent and her administrative staff started working on making reductions based on our original budget submission. And it wasn't, you know, it wasn't pleasant. It wasn't pretty. We understand tough budget year. However, we also are charged with educating students, whether it's good times or bad times. So we can't just fall on tough budget year all the time. What we ended up with was a budget that cut most of any new programs that we were looking to institute. It did have one teacher, a new teacher, which is very important for one of our CTE programs. I know the council is aware that we have five CTE programs presently. We're hoping to, in the next year, this upcoming year, to expand that to eight, so three more programs. And one or two of those programs would be hurt by anything, any severe cuts in our operating budget. One of those, Superintendent will talk about this, is a biomed CTE. And the teacher that we're able to save, or at least based on the manager's budget, was a science teacher, which is crucial for that because we need to have a teacher that will be able to teach science classes while other teachers, more experienced, are going to be taking in classes on the biomed program. We are trying to move the district forward. Some of the things that were cut out, that we had to cut out because we didn't have the money, were things such as our math interventionists, which is faculty, staff, and parents have found very helpful in helping students that are having math problems, getting them up to the next level and then giving them that extra support. A part-time nurse at Pleasant View School, which is our second largest school, has one nurse right now. And as we know, we combined two schools there, and so we were looking to have another nurse there, somebody in the medical field to help out. Some teachers aides, which we thought were important. So these have all been cut already. Our hope was that if we got any money from the state, any additional money from what the governor proposed, we'd be able to put enough of that together to maybe bring one or two of those or whatever back. We also try to use grants wherever we can, but grants don't always pay a full amount. Sometime, and you can't get all the grants, sometimes they're very competitive. So that's what our hopes were. We did get some extra state aid. I don't know how it's all shaking out right now. A lot of times, I just got a bottom line. And if you're just looking at the bottom line, that's a terrible thing to do from a budget standpoint because part of the state aid is what's called categorical funding. It can only be used in certain areas. And it's very specific condition set by the state. I'll give you an example. One of them is high-cost special ed. So it looks like we have all this extra money, but if the particular special ed doesn't meet those guidelines, it's not money. It's money that's over there on the ledger, but it's something we can't spend. So that's part of the reason that we're concerned if there's any type of cuts, whether it be operating, capital, or just move and say, okay, you got more money from the state, we're going to cut it from the town. I want to talk about the fund balance because I've heard a lot with regards to people thinking we're just cash-rich and there's just money flowing everywhere in the school department. So I'll start off with a couple of numbers, figures for you. We started the year, the current fiscal year, with 2.3 million, a little over 2.3 million, almost 2.4 million of capital funds, I mean of fund balance. However, half a million of that, 500,000, we have set up in reserve funds. And these are reserve funds for increased unexpected transportation costs, increased unexpected special ed costs, increased utility costs, and increased tuitions going to other schools. Smithfield has not had a budget deficit in over 30 years. One of the reasons is because we set up those reserve funds. So in the middle of a year, the student, special ed student moves in, and it's not in our budget. We can go to those special reserves and we can pay for it. Same thing if we need an extra bus. And by the way, special ed, some of them aren't really expensive. Some of those tuitions can cost over $100,000. Buses, we're at a $92,000 for a standard bus. That's one of the buses in town that takes kids around. If we have to put another bus on, that's an unexpected type of course. So right away, you got to take that half a million out. We spent about a little over quarter of a million on special projects that we took out of our fund balance. And we try to be as judicious as we can by taking things that we're not getting, the 35% reimbursement from the state for housing aid. So these are items such as furniture. They don't give you anything, but we bought new furniture. Some of the furniture in the high school came with the high school. So we're getting new furniture in some of these places, and we hope to continue to do that. Security cameras, walkie-talkies, were part of security. Field mats for the brand-new stadium. They weren't part of the oil project, but these are field mats so that spikes, cleats, don't tear up the track as players are walking across. Technology room furniture, computers themselves, fencing vehicles. Our vehicles are all paid out of our fund balance if we ever have to buy a vehicle. Last year, we bought a vehicle. We bought a van. Okay, so that, that was almost $60,000, I think, we took out of our fund balance for that. Part of that, we took out of food service because it's used for food, so we got part of that there. We have projects going out to high school right now. The OPM fees are going to come out of fund balance. The architect fees are going to come out of fund balance. And we do this so that the money that the town gives us in our capital is spent on, you know, brick and mortar, on the actual parts of the school that we're improving for the schools. And if we have an overage on anything, it comes out of the fund balance. You take that down, what I just told you, that 2.3, almost 2.4 million, comes to 1.1 million. Oh, you may say, oh, it's still a ton of money. Well, auditors, these aren't politicians. These are auditors, tell you this confluent number is 3% to 6% of your operating budget.
Can you say that again?
3% to 6% are what auditors will tell you is a good number on 45 million. So we right now are at 2.6%. We're below the lower level of 3%. I'm not complaining about that. I'm just telling you, we use this money. I don't think a town council would want us in the middle of the year to come running to you for money because we had a special ed student move in, or because we needed another bus, or because, you know, heat or whatever was too high. So that's a very prudent way of doing it. I'm now going to turn it over to the superintendent. I will come back and talk about the capital. But let's have the superintendent on the educational.
Good evening, members of the council and town manager, Don Bart, Superintendent. Our mission is really clear, an adaptive and challenging learning environment that prepares our students to live in a global society. You know that. Several of you have graduated from our schools. Some of you have put your children through our schools, and I know you take education seriously. So to our teachers, our administrators, our staff, and our parents, to fulfill the mission, we have to have our classrooms equipped. And the most important resource we have in our classrooms are our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our administrators in our schools. So when the school committee prepared the budget, we requested 3.24%. The reason for that would be to be able to cover all of the driving costs. So each year, we know that we have always an increase in special education. As Richard said, we may not always know we've got a fund based on the possibility, probability of any outplacements or any special services. Those are based on IEP. Sometimes they're based on the state, and we don't get to say no to the state. Similarly, we have two bus companies. We already know 5% in our last contract. Our local bus company will be going up statewide, which we're required to use for outplacements, for the CTEs, for our students leaving our schools. That rate is not set by us, and it's always at a much higher rate. We don't have any control over that. Certainly, salaries and benefits are a largest part of any school budget. We're still lower than most. We're at 79%. Maintenance and utilities, medical, and certainly Melissa Devine can talk about the increases there. So we do budget keeping that in mind, at the same time trying to grow the program. I know that you are fans of the CTE, the Career and Technical Education Programs. I've come here many times this year, along with Melissa and Angelo, to be able to talk to you about the renovations that were needed in the culinary. Those have started. You know how tight that timeline is. That money there is not going to cover some of the niceties, instance, furniture. It's not necessarily going to cover the staffing that we'll need when I have to add a special educator to the high school for a program. We've also started on the second project in the library, which is moving the intensive special education room from the back garage into the center of the school, into classrooms that are appropriate. That money is coming out of the reserves, but I'm most concerned about our operational because that's where our driving costs are. And in addition, we've accepted and we appreciate the town manager's work. Town manager and I, and the finance director, and our finance director have met every other week, starting before the finance, before the budget, all the way to the end. We've explained where our growing pains are, and he's explained why 2% was what he thought the town could do. I did the same thing the past two years with the past town managers so that there was an understanding, and I think we have one. We've also spent a lot of time with our finance review board, which I think over the past two years has done a terrific job in understanding a school budget, which is, I believe, much different than any others. There are those fluctuating costs, but I'll tell you, coming off of the 2%, because Melissa and I have been cutting, so the cuts we're making between what we were hoping to get, we have, and the 2% are a little bit over $500,000. We were able to do that through materials, so we're not buying furniture. We're not buying paint. We're cutting back on paper, but I did not have to cut any staff. I couldn't bring back math interventionists. Those had been grant-funded. Grant-funded positions, unfortunately, when the grant goes away, unless you could put it into the operating fund, we lose those. So I know the folks behind me, and I believe it, we need those positions if it's not in the budget with the 2%. Going below the 2% in the operations clause, I will have to cut positions. So these positions that I'll have to cut will include assistant principal at the high school. It will include the biomedical program that is ready to come online. And I do want to explain that the majority of our students that leave for a CTE go to another district for biomedical. And potentially, the special educator to be able to run that program at the high school. These are just the beginnings of the cuts because coming below that level funding, 1%, there's not a lot of fat in the district. I'm going to say there's no fat in that district. If we can keep that 2% in the operations, we can, we'll still run an excellent program. We're going to run an excellent program because we have excellent faculty, administration, school committee, and paraprofessional secretary. Below that, we're going to be in a position that is unenviable. We will be like some of the other districts. If you're watching the news, you'll see that they're underwater. We are not. We're growing. Our CTE enrollment has grown. When I came into this district, $600,000 was going out the door in tuition to other programs. We were only bringing in 320,000. We are almost even now. So we have done a great job. This will stop some of the momentum. Over the past seven years, looking at all of the budget increases from the town, the average is .86 in increases. So we're doing a lot with the little.
Thank you.
Superintendent, can I just clarify a question? You referenced you would have to cut the assistant principal biomedical program and the special educator. Is that based on if we were to level funds, or what does that base on?
That would be based on if you cut the 2% to 1%. If you were to level fund, it will be devastating. That would be 0%. So I will have no way of meeting the cost of the increased special education, the increased transportation, the increase in benefits. Level funding, you're giving us the same amount that we had last year, but my costs that I have no control over have gone up.
So what is the cost for the assistant principal biomedical and special education dollars?
If I were to take a look, so the assistant principal, I was going to look at salary and benefits is about 150. Biomedical is an entire program, so minimally, it's one science teacher, minimally.
So all three about 150?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Superintendent, it says, one of the line items is for in-service staff development and support. And it looks like there is a 166,000-plus increase in that item. Can you explain why it's such a big increase, 156% increase?
If we bring in curriculum, and I might have my new assistant superintendent come up, who is the deputy commissioner, we do have to provide training for our faculty to be able to use the high-quality curriculum, which is a requirement from the Rhode Island Department of Education. So when we bring in our meth program, NURICA, we have to provide, we have to provide professional development. If our grant funding is cut, Ryan doesn't say we're going to make up the difference. We have to make up the difference in terms of a general fund.
But why are you projecting such a big increase for the fiscal year that's coming up?
I'll have to take a look at that specific line item. Part of that would be, again, talking without that in front of me, is the CTE training as well for our teachers. So part of that, for instance, biomedical, is we do have to provide training for the teachers.
Another item, big item increase was transportation.
She understands that, and I just want to give you one thing. Transportation, you want to break it down by what's in district, the normal stuff, you see the buses.
I understand.
Talk about out of state, I mean out of town.
Right, because there's a line here that just says transportation. And it says that there is a $292,000-plus increase, 92% projected. So my question is, basically, is whether it's in the district or out of district, what's really driving such a large increase?
If I may, good evening. Melissa Devine, the school finance director. So in answering your question regarding the transportation, I believe that you're looking at the document that we complete as all the other towns do in that format, that the town sends to the schools and our department, correct? So the comparison that you're looking at, you're looking at last year's budget compared to this year's budget. We had to add a bus on in last year that was not budgeted. So when you have something in the previous year that's not budgeted, you have that increase that was not accounted for. So we had to put that increase in there, so there was an added bus. And then we had a half-day van that was added that was not budgeted in '24. So when you add that... So when you add that in, it was not budgeted in '25, so when you had to add that in, you now have doubled that the next year, along with the 5% increase that contractual obligation has. Plus, I believe the state was estimating between 4.5% and 5% increase. And again, those routes at the state, we have no control over, and those routes are based on the membership ridership. So if you are sharing a bus with North Providence and neighboring town, and all of a sudden those students move to another district across the state, we end up owning that bus by ourselves, or maybe we pick up on another bus. So the reason you see the fluctuation is if you are short in the previous year and you're comparing from that year budget, you have to account for adding in what you were sure, and then putting in the new year amount plus any increases. Does that make sense?
Can you just, you said based on what ship?
Ridership.
Ride?
Ridership.
Ridership.
So if you have two students in Smithfield, two students, it's 50/50, sharing with another town, all of a sudden the other two students leave, it's 100% on the district.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it doesn't normally happen that way, but I mean, it's a greater chance. So it changes every single day, and we have no control over how they do that routing and how they negotiate for their dispatch and their, the transportation company itself. So they do all of that. We have no say or control over how they do that.
It just seems strange because the number is doubling over last year.
Correct.
Because it seems like adding one bus would double the.
Well, so it's adding a bus and a monitor, and if you add, so a bus alone is like $90,000, adding another $25,000 for a monitor, and then you add a van and a monitor for half a day, and then you take those two, and then now you have to also look at the following year, do we have additional students that were estimated to take the bus? Now you add on, maybe there's an additional bus there, plus you add the statewide, you're comparing the statewide to, the statewide went up 5%. We have 22 buses in the district, add 5% to that, you know, 2.3 million, you know, when you add that up, it adds up pretty quick. So, I mean, it's talking, a single bus with an aide, it's going to be the $92,000 plus $25,000 for that aide. So it's 100 and change for a bus. We also have increased the ridership at the private schools. So we have a private school in our district, we have a lot of students that attend that private school, we have to pay for that bus. Back when William Windsor was open, which from what I understand, I know that my children went to William Windsor, the bus, the St. Philip's students were on my children's buses, but they got dropped off at William Windsor, from what I understand, and then a bus, the last bus in, took all of the William Windsor students over. So the way it was working is the district was basically charging just a small portion because they were using a little piece of the buses in the area. They were all getting dropped off at William Windsor, and then that last bus in took all of the kids over to St. Philip's. Now we have two full buses that go there. We don't have William Windsor, so we have two full buses. We do share them, so it's almost like you have a whole bus, so we're paying probably like $98,000 for private school transportation. So that's $100,000. That's literally a teacher without fringes or a paraprofessional.
Superintendent, could you switch? I'm sorry. No, that's okay. Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on something you said earlier. You said the most important resources the school has is the teachers, the paraprofessionals, and administrators.
Right. It's always the people in the school that make the experience for kids absolutely and then having, having the building certainly in good shape and having the materials, but the heart of the school district are the people.
Do you have any data as to how many administrators have left the school department in the last 12 months?
No, but I'm not sure it's relevant unless you're talking about them going to other districts for more money.
No, I'm just saying in general. Do you know how many administrators have left? Why they left?
Yes, I do. Some have received promotions, some have received a lot more money, some have town councils that provide additional funding for the schools. In fact, most of them did, so I'm not really sure what the questioning is other than.
Was this information obtained through, do you guys do exit interviews when you have people?
You do exit interviews.
Okay.
Yes.
Mommy does those.
I do.
Okay. There's no HR department, correct?
Those duties are split up, so one of the causes of a couple of my very closest administrators is more of the type of tone that occurs unfortunately and the contentiousness that happens unfortunately with this governing body and us at meetings like this.
So you're saying it's our fault that they're leaving?
No, I'm saying it's one factor. I'm trying to answer a question, and I'm not really sure how it's related to the works up, but it's mixed.
I asked how many administrators have left in the last 12 months?
One.
What about the last 24 months?
Two.
Sound a little more accurate, two?
No.
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 And you're saying the reason that these people have left, you've done exit interviews with each of these individuals?
Yes.
Okay. And in those exit interviews, they both cited, you just listed on five different reasons. There's a few administrators.
People leave for different reasons, but certainly those are some of the main ones. Certainly salary, promotion, working conditions.
What's the situation with advertising those vacant positions?
This is a budget hearing. We're talking a budget, we're talking about how much money is needed to run a district, just like any department is out, for the next 12 months. It's not a personnel decision or a personnel hearing. I mean, really, I can give you that information, but you have a budget and finance board that ask questions, and they ask some of these questions, and they do it away from a politically charged type environment, and that's what their job is. I mean, this is, am I wrong? I mean, we want to know what it takes, so you need to make a decision based on what it takes to run the district, how many people we have. And we haven't asked how many town administrators have left. I mean, because it has nothing to do with what we're looking for.
Mr. President, I continue. I have one more question. What is the taxpayer cost to advertising those positions? Does anybody know? It's $0 to advertise the position?
They use an outfit called School Spring.
Okay. Melissa? Are those salaries?
I mean, I'm just wondering, is there a cost for the town to do it? I mean, when you guys advertise, is there a cost that you have?
Is there? Are those salaries have increased? Do you know in those advertisements?
So you don't cost, okay. There is a cost depending on where it's advertised.
Do you know if there's a salary increase on those positions since those administrators have left?
In some cases, there may be, in some cases, there may not be. There's a range that we give people.
Is that a yes?
Sometimes there is, sometimes there isn't. You can use those words. I mean, obviously, you know, we're going at the core here now, but sometimes there is a salary increase, sometimes.
Listen, these are not, these are not questions that are meant to be asked with any type of analysis. I'm just curious if these advertised salaries have increased or if they haven't, and if that's incorporated.
And I said sometimes they happen, sometimes they haven't.
Well, is it incorporated in the budget? If there is a salary increase, that's something that I think is relevant, if there's more salaries.
If we knew back on February 25th or so, it would be incorporated in the budget.
Okay, so that's what you're saying?
No, if there was an increase and that we knew about back then, it would be incorporated in the budget. If we, when the superintendent and the staff reworks the budget, if they know about it, they would put that in as well. They would rework these things constantly.
I'm just trying to figure out if the salaries are accurate, or if they have been raised with people leaving for what apparently is total exit interviews for more money if we're advertising for these positions, or if there is a salary increase, which I don't have a straight answer on. If that's the case, are they in the budget?
If some may have been, I'm going to say, I'll tell you right now, that if it's a salary increase that has happened in the last, we'll say, 60 days, where we've had to raise something to get qualified candidates, they're not in the budget right now. Something close to that is in the budget, but we're not talking about doubling salaries.
No, I'm not suggesting that you're doubling the salaries. I'm just wondering if that's incorporated in the budget. It sounds like, does anybody know the answer to that in the school department? I see. Someone knows the answer to that.
So what happens is the budget is built and presented in February, which we then bring our recommendation to the town council. We usually are working to get additional information. For example, the town manager knows as well as the finance director, we found out about the health increase, which was over like 9.7%.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The health insurance. It was extremely high, it was higher than what we had both estimated because we had been given a range and looked at history. So with that being said, yes, there are things that are, that is not in the budget, but we now have to incorporate that in. Also, teachers retire, we replace, people leave. In some instances, if salary is higher, they get put in, but we do not adjust until we know our final state aid and what amount of money that we'll be getting from the town council. In addition, we also don't know about all of the CTE programs, the students that are coming in and going out. So we are going on a day-by-day basis, like checking every week with the high school, the CTE director, just to ensure that, you know, I'll be updating the spreadsheet. So there's a number of factors. We make that presentation where it's at. We can change it every 10 minutes about it. So when we found out about the healthcare increase, we started thinking about, okay, what are we going to have to do? One of the things, and I think both the town manager and finance director, there is some residuals that dividends back in the healthcare, so what we did is we used that this year so that would help save some money from that 9.7% increase. It was only about 1% difference, but you also don't want to use too much of that because then it will be hard to make it up. So again, we don't change the budgets for all the different salaries, so if a salary just got posted two weeks ago, it's not in here because we haven't sat down to do everything. We hadn't sat down to work out based on what the town manager's recommendation was because we already had close to 600 to reduce on top of finding out additional information for ads, work this compensation that came in. It actually was $5,000 lower than what I had budgeted, so there's a savings. Has that been adjusted yet? No, because as soon as we get the final numbers, we'll go through, and then we'll find out, you know, who's finally, who's retiring, because you get retirements all the way up in the year, you hear about them in December, but you do get some at the end of the year. You also get people who take on the jobs in other districts, and it's a constant moving target, and that's not just here, it's every district. Same thing with families moving into the district with special needs.
So you're saying it's adjusted internally after the fact it's not going to show up?
Well, we have a document that we'll post and bring back to the school committee. From what I've found out here, is the town never adjusts that number. So the first year I came in, there was an adjustment in state aid, and when the next year's budget was put up, although we had approved a new budget, it sent the budget down, it was never really voted on by the town council, so it was comparing it to a state aid number that was non-existent. Right now, your budget has the state aid number. I don't know if you've adjusted it. Maybe the town manager or finance director can answer that, but we did get additional state aid because our enrollment changed, so they do an enrollment when they first release your state aid in January, they use the October enrollment, which they did that for a reason. The reason they do that is because October enrollments are fluctuating, students moving in and out, and they're usually lower, and then things are tidied up, and you find an increase come month. So the reason the district got some additional state aid in April was because we had an increase in the student enrollment, the average student membership. And then the second increase, which just came out last week, that was in the categorical areas of the group home. So there's a group home in town, and we get so much for that. I don't really know the number off the top of my head. I used to know it, but it's changed, the formula is a little different. But they've had an additional money there, and they've also added to the special ed, high-cost special ed, they've changed the how to go and to fund it, that added $40,000. So in total, from October, the release of the January number, we had gotten an additional 180, but we also had additional healthcare expenses, additional students.
I just was curious about the salaries specifically. Again, there's kind of a lot of layers to this. I'm having a hard time following where you're going. Is that, no, it's not in the budget, but it just gets adjusted as the process goes? Is that kind of the answer?
So I think I did say that. I think I said it is not in the budget if it happened two weeks ago, and if it happened in February, it's in the budget.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Superintendent, I just quickly.
I just want to.
Can I just, I guess it's about what she said last, just a moment. The $40,000 that included in 183, in the 183, or is that in addition to?
Correct, no, it's in.
Okay, just a moment.
I have a question before we get to it. Your estimation with two weeks left in the budget cycle, is there a surplus in the school department's budget?
There is right now a very small one. We have a few orders that we need to place, that we did not place for some pastoral supplies because we were closed down, and we aren't going to place them, so it's going to be pretty low on the existing, in the current year.
So what's that against even?
It will have a small surplus, it will not be at the summit.
Very small, do you have $4 million?
Uh, no. Probably under the $100,000.
Thank you.
You're not pulling me to that because things change tomorrow, something else might happen, right? So if something happens tomorrow and then that $100,000 goes away, it's zero.
You're speaking like a true financier. But you're talking about salaries, I want to bring up a very important point, and it's bigger than administrative salaries. You're talking about if we raise an administrator's salary, is it in the budget or not? What about teachers? They're the biggest part of our entire budget. We get retirements, and when we put that budget down, we have to take a guess as to what we're going to have. And so many times, we'll take a guess as a third-step teacher we're going to hire to replace. It might not be a third step because it might be an area that's tough, it could be a fourth or fifth step if we want to get a quality teacher, which is our goal. So it could be a first-step teacher, so we're getting less. It could be a person that has a family plan on health insurance or not. Those things are much bigger swings in our budget than you have in front of you and any other things we're talking about on the administrative. So I'll tell you right there, what's in there is what we put in in February. We're hiring people as we go, and once we get that knowledge on it, once we know all of our finances, we will put this thing back in. We have 30-year track history of not running deficits, we won't invest it. But that doesn't mean that cuts will not hurt the district, will not hurt the educational product that we all want to put out. Let me talk a little bit about capital. The capital is correlated to our educational project. Everybody's excited about our new CTE in culinary, and they should be. That's requiring capital. We have the capital going on right now as we speak, and it's supposed to be done by June 30th, and it was a requirement to get certification from the state of Rhode Island so that the culinary program will be certified approval. So there's an investment the town makes in capital, very important. We hired a teacher a couple of years ago. If we were in this budget cycle, based on what we're looking at, we have a room and no teacher. See, the two go together. And on the biomedical, we need a teacher in order to get that program off the ground because we can't pull the current teachers to run the biomedical classes. Now we've got to backfill what classes they were teaching, and we will take the equipment because that's a type of class, it doesn't require a new room, but it requires equipment. That's something that most likely will come out of our fund balance. Another reason you need a healthy fund balance there. Also, the town council, not too long ago, you voted to go to phase two on the capital projects. That's very important because without phase two, we don't get our 35% funding. The two projects we're doing right now are emergency projects, right? They're going to use up much of the funding from last year, hopefully no overruns, but you deal with a building built in 1966. I can't tell you what's behind every wall. The architects, the engineers, our people can't tell you what's behind every wall. You could face something. We're hoping not. I'm pretty confident on the culinary room, that things are going to go smooth. On the other one, on the ISU room, it's a bigger area. It had construction about 25 years ago, so I think we're in good shape. Again, we don't know. But in order to keep our program running, we need funding in there. The state will be, it's coming out in September, we'll have our phase two, we'll know the numbers, we'll know the projects, we'll have dollar estimates associated with that, and then we'll be able to start working on some of them. But if these two projects take up most of it, we won't be able to do too much more. Okay? So, and the capital, we try to use the 35% comes back on everything, and that's our goal. And if we get it, there are some items they don't allow to be done. So, and the capital, we try to use the 35% comes back on everything. And that's our goal. And if we get it, there are some items they don't allow it on. But if we, you know, do get it, we'll have some money left over. Okay? Last item I want to talk about because it's basically affecting council meetings and the budget process and everything, is this loan that people think there's a law. Now, I'm going to tell you, in 2022, there was a different town manager. There was a different superintendent. Four of the town council members up there right now are around. Four of the school committee members up there are around. Councilwoman Boris and I were the only two that were around when this came about. When it was presented to the school committee.
Sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt you. I think the year is 2022, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that was, that was not, that was the previous town council, one town council ago.
You went on the town council in 22? I stand corrected.
I just want to make sure that we're on the same page about what year we're talking about.
In February of 22, if you went on the town council, I don't know about that. Then I'm the only one who was there around. It's the other one. No other one can tell you the facts. That's what happened and that's what I'm really set it up. But it's something that really is not a budget thing. We should have a conversation on this because somebody's gaslighting somebody. I'm not sure who it is. A plan was put out for financing boil. I remember at the school committee meeting when it happened. It was not 100% planned, but it had to be voted on because of, they didn't get in. They wouldn't get their state funding. It had to be in in February, so that's when it was done. It mentioned a gap being filled by a loan. My ears perked up. I asked a whole bunch of questions. I asked, I'm like, would you ask tonight? I asked, who's entity giving us the loan? What bank was it? Was it a state entity? Are there building authorities and all that? No answers. I asked, what type of loan is it? I thought it was a bridge loan. I had to explain what a bridge loan is, which is basically a loan you get until you find another funding source and bridges that gap. Oh, no, it's not a bridge loan. So I said, well, the term is, I'm thinking it would have maybe a 20-year span because life expectancy, the fields, et cetera. No, not 20, what about five? Didn't know, didn't have any, anything like that. You know, questions any of us would ask when you're in business or a person you'd ask about a loan? What's the term of the loan? What interest rate? What are the monthly payments of a loan? That's probably the biggest one if you figure out a budget. Not one of those got answers at all. Just the word loan was utilized. Never was there a matching of loan either by the town or the school department would be take place. So it goes off. Field gets built. Now all of a sudden, the term loan starts. School department can't take out a loan, number one. We don't have that ability. You are a fiscal agents. You can take out a loan from a banker, from whatever weekend. We've never approached by either a town council or a town manager to take out a loan. And that meeting reminds us of loan, don't you? There's never a discussion voted on about a loan in the school committee. And I think if you look at town council records, you won't, you won't see a loan in there. And nobody says it was an oral contract because we've got enough attorneys around here who know an oral contract has to be completed in one year, can't go over a year. That's just a basic thing of law. So I don't know where the concept came up that somebody thought there was a loan, but there was no meeting in the minds, there was no loan. And I think what happened basically is they never filled that part of the plan in. They just said, oh, this was funded here. And I think Mr. Biden knows where all these things are. She's been trying to figure it out since day one. Because it was a convoluted plan, it took from a lot of different things. The one thing I can tell you hard and fast, school committee, $2 million would come out of our capital, of in our fund balance. That was hard and fast. And that's three different school committees have all said that and all acknowledged that. So we did at some point discuss this, but we never, there is no loan. So. I just have a question. Hold on. There was a, you know, point to know, you said, are they documented somewhere? Or is it, I mean, it's thinking that. Yeah, in fact, it was a, it was one of those beautiful zoomings. And I should be on a recording. So. Okay. Want to hear that one? Yes. And I do have the graphic that the superintendent at the time drew up. I assume she drew it up with the town manager at the time. And so I'm saying that same thing was presented to the council, who was there on that particular council at the time. I mean, you couldn't present, one to the council, one to the school committee of the thing. But I know that was a big empty thing in terms of the rest will be filled by a loan. Okay, thank you. Yes. Hold on, please. I think, I think Mr. Biden has one, one or two last.
I think what you were talking about, Mr. Chairman, was the concession stand. Is that what you were talking about? Fully, quite a lot of conflicts.
No, well, I mean, that's the last item that has been done. And if you know the history of it, when they put that out, everything with that, that plan went running, by the way, until they sent the concession stand. But that happened to be the last one, so they were running out of money. Now they put that out to bid. It came out a little over $2 million. They said, oh, let's put it up again. It didn't, it came out a little over $1 million still in that money. So they decided to talk to the current contractor and negotiate a price, which is what they ended up doing. I think they got it down in somewhere, don't quote me on this because I wasn't on that committee, $800,000, sometimes somewhere in that area. Right, right. Remember the Boyle, the Boyle committee? Their job is to oversee the, the overall handling of the project, the hiring of the various people, watching what's going over, having a P M report and then et cetera. Council of school, I mean, you kind of have to approve things and obviously pay bills, but their job is to oversee the.
Well, it came to us, that was the last council, but the three of us were on that council, myself, council president, Estonia, and councilwoman Tapi. And it came to us as a change order. And we conditioned the approval of the change order. This was a very large amount of money to add on into a project at that point. And I remember it had to be approved very quickly because the whole project had to be substantially completed by the end of June or there was a deadline at some point in order for us to receive reimbursement from the state.
And you started talking about substantial completion, which has you wanted at the end of a certain year. Otherwise, it would have pushed you into the following year. That's the point.
So that our approval of the funds for the change order was conditioned specifically upon the raising of money to pay for it through sponsorship specifically. And I think it was mainly, I said, it's right in the minutes of that meeting. I'd say you made an idea, you had an idea for the thing, for funding of it. It wasn't an idea that came in front of the school committee for us to say, yes, that's what I'm going to do. And I told the Boyle committee on at least two occasions separately. I told them what the school department was doing and what we did is to adopt a policy because we didn't want to be in the same position we're in tonight. Eight years down the road, when the fields started to fall, the tarp on the field started to wear out. We didn't want to have to come and say, hey, town council, we need a half a million dollars to fix that tar. Because we knew there was an eight-year high limit on it. So we started a policy where, which we always had a bit of a policy, but we actually put it with the intent of taking signage, advertising, et cetera, and using it for all of the fields over there. With the main part being the synthetic turf and sending the money into a separate font. I understand that, and I understood it at the time. But we weren't talking about advertising. We were talking about naming rights. And companies are willing to spend a lot of money on naming rights.
Not $700,000, but I digress.
Well, I, you know.
And, and I'm sure if somebody had that idea, they should have.
We were told that there were companies that had an interest. I don't know what happened to all of that, though. There didn't seem to be much of a follow-up with the Boyle committee on it. At some point, nothing, nothing seemed to happen. But it wasn't specifically conditioned on our obtaining the funding. And I think the word loan came into play, maybe because where the money came from was specific funding.
I saw a comment about Boyle, I thought it was great. A loan, but it wasn't any of it. All right. And then the Boyle committee, really, they're not the party that should have been brought in on that. I mean, their job is to get the job done. Okay? They will eventually be disbanded. They're not going to be. As long as they finish the project, they will disband. That's the job of all five.
Somebody from the school department is, or somebody from the school committee had to be before us because they were asking for the change order.
They, they, I know that at that particular meeting, somebody, we're getting a field there, but somebody from the department had checked to a loan, but we had a rate to a loan. Like, that, that should be in the.
I'm not seeing that at the same P M. And the chair of the Boyle committee. They're currently, they're finishing 2024 minutes, or 2022. These are for February 15, 2024. No, I'm sorry, that's, that's what I'm, February 20, 2024, 2024, correct me if you have.
So that we should have, if you want to discuss it, but it should not affect this budget process. And I've heard lots of, I've heard a lot of differences.
I just want to say something regarding that because, I mean, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I assume everyone feels the same way. Correct me if I'm wrong, that any decision made here tonight has absolutely nothing to do with this Boyle Athletic Loan slash not loan that I, in my opinion, and again, I don't want to speak for everybody. Anything that happens regarding the budget and the needs of the school and the needs of the teachers and the education for the students and the desires for CTE and what funding needs to happen for those things. And this internal dispute within the town and the school department is, in my opinion, completely separate. It'll have no bearing whatsoever on any vote regarding the budget. I want to make that extremely, extremely clear to everybody here.
That is my position as well.
Completely separate issues. And I think we're all on the same page that no, it'll be influenced by this. It's a separate thing.
And it shouldn't be. That's what I'm trying to say.
You're right, you're right.
Thank you.
We're on the same page for that. Hi again. So I just want to talk, follow up behind Mr. Iamatelli regarding the housing aid. So in 2024 July, we submitted the 2025 housing aid, which is a lot, maybe not a lot of people in the audience, but housing aid is the program where the Department of Education gives back a certain percentage. And it's 35% for Smithfield. All the districts are at a higher rate. It goes based on the demographics of where you live. And so there were some additional bonuses given. And Smithfield was able to take advantage of a 10% bonus on the Boyle project. So with that being said, I was trying to think of a way about the whole going on about a loan. And again, I think it was pretty vague, but then I was here in '24. So when the final happened, so I wasn't really sure about how that would work. And I thought about the housing aid. So on that project for the housing aid, the school, the town receives about $4.1 million back on that Boyle project. And it's spread over three years. So just this year, the town received 1.3 million related to the Boyle project plus some additional housing aid on a school project. There was a gym renovation at the male school when I first came here. It was in, in process and they finished up. And I remember it clearly because we had to ask for an extension from R I B because they noticed that we were probably going to lose that housing aid and they granted it. So those, that housing aid was $76,000 and that was given back to the town this year. So I just thought maybe in talking about that curiosity was where is the housing aid from that? Would it be ideal to be able to reinvest back into programs? I think that there is a, what is in the town that says that any housing that comes back from the state would be put back into reinvestment, which I think is a smart thing because again, my children, I'm a resident here as well, not only employee, but I'm a resident. My children went to the school and had a beautiful experience for the wonderful staff that we have here. What we need to build things, so I'm just curious to know is, are we putting that housing aid back into the program for investments? So is that 1.3 plus the 76, is that going back into a fund for reinvestment in schools?
Finance director, do you want to answer?
So in addition, you've also got 1.3 million for the bond reimbursement to directly to R I B. So are you saying that 2.6 million on the bond, even though the project for the Boyle, none of that is coming back to reinvest? All of it is going to provide some bond payment? So is the bond payment that high because I have to submit that to, to R I B as well? So, so right back for just that project of loan, let me just look. Okay. I just want to make sure I know what I'm talking about. I believe that 1.3 came from R I B, which was the housing aid for the bonded project. So if the loan is, the bond is 1.3, wouldn't that cover that? I'm talking about a 1.3 that's over and above. Yeah, so I have the housing aid, the final entitlements. So, so Smithfield received total housing aid of 3.114, 650 the share. So we received 3.1 million. 1.3 was paid through R I B, which was the bond portion. And then 1.7 was based on capital. And what that means is if you have a bond through R I B, it goes directly through R I B, they give you back the money. Otherwise, it is the state gives you the difference if you're paying for another method, whether it be a private loan or cash or, you know, fund balance, capital reserve, whatever it may be. It was 1.7. And in that 1.7, 1.3 is for the first year of a 3 and a 4.1 back on the Boyle project. And the difference is from other smaller projects that were probably before my time, plus 76,000 for the J M S middle school. So all in all, this year, the actual payment for housing aid to the town was approximately 3.1 million. So it did not go back in, okay? So do we know?
That, that wouldn't have been just for the Boyle complex. That would have been for the entire bond that was taken out from the reconfiguration of the schools.
Correct, so the bond portion, the bond loan. The town received 3.1 million dollars. Of that, R I B is 1.376. That means that was the bond. So that's the bond projects, they were major schools, maybe. Then any of the projects that were paid with cash, maybe some of the schools did get paid with cash. That's why I said it's only 76 for the J M S middle school that was paid out of the school fund, out of the school's fund balance. And then the school and the Boyle project was 9.4 million is what qualified for housing aid. And that housing aid was, the housing aid on the, just the Boyle project, it's project number 12595. And the cost was $9,304 because even though it costs more than that, we had grants, we had S of funds, we had other things that paid that didn't qualify for housing aid. That came up to 4.16. They spread it over three years. We were receiving the first year this year is $1,395,000. That's just Boyle. 76,000 is for project number 12594, which is the J M S renovation, the gymnasium. That was 76,000. And then you have various different bond projects up at the top. So the state gives you a document and it breaks up the bond projects. That amount of money was $1,376,416, which comes from R I B. So the $1,376 is for the bond projects. And the $1,471 is for cash, whether it be town capital, town capital reserve, you know, school fund balance, wherever that may be coming from, as long as it's not a grant or another federal source. Because you can't get money personally on that when it's not a federal source. So all in all, we have 2.8. And then they must have adjusted the bonus when they do that. They retro back for any projects that didn't get the bonus from the force. So there's probably a one-time payment that I can trail down further into these reports. I can trail down further into these reports that ride. But this is the highest, lowest level I have right now. So only one point three, seven, six, four one six was for the bond.
That's what I'm supposed to question.
So I was asking, did it go back into per the, per the, the, what it says that it was going to, you know, in the one it says here, it says that any reimbursement through ride would go back to, I guess, back as ring first, uh, improvements in the school. Honestly, I'm thinking that maybe if it's going back to me, that's where the seven fifty comes from. I'm not really sure.
What Melissa's talking about is the school capital reserve fund says that if there's wide reimbursements on projects based on dispersments from that fund, that that reimbursement amount goes back in. But I don't know that the Boyle Project came.
So then if I can add to that, then if I may, um, we follow all the other processes of the town and we follow all the, you know, purchasing procedures. Why would we not use the school funds in the same method as this ordinance? So if the school's two million dollars was invested into the school, why would we not follow the school capital reserve? It's just, do we have to give that money over to the school capital reserve and transfer it in there for it to qualify? I just think that why would we only say just that fund? If it's any cash that we're getting housing aid, ride, you know, ride supports the school department. I think that maybe we would follow that same practice that the school's fund balance would get reinvested. I think we're doing that right now with the emergency projects. We're taking the housing aid. We agreed that the housing aid that comes back from that, we'll put it back into the school, um, additional project or additional expenses from those projects. And again, it's just a question. I know, um, I know that, um, Ms. Bothas had said this was only about it. I was curious because, um, when we're talking about not having the seven fifty, I was, I wanted to know where the loan, where the housing aid went. So still in hindsight, if, if we got two point eight million, where does the other one point three go? Is that going somewhere else in the general fund or?
So that ordinance that you're talking about, I, what I read it the last time. It didn't, it also specify that those funds can go to a loan that the town took out to pay their, to pay their bond or their loan payment?
It could, but are you saying the loan is two point eight, two point six?
The twenty five, twenty six. Do you have a bracket?
Hey, this is the budget. What are you going to do?
Each year we pay about four million dollars for that. The loan that we took off the water.
Right. And so we got, again, so for the loan for the Boyle, you, you pay.
This year it was two point five million.
Mm hmm. So did the housing aid go to that?
The housing aid went to the, well, we received those towards the payment of our.
The bond.
Bond.
Right. Which is separate, right? So that's one point three.
And then you said there was other items.
Yeah.
Other than the one point three.
Correct.
Caitlin, can you come up to the podium? Because they can't hear you on the TV.
I'm going to suggest that, um, this really is way off track from the budget.
Yeah, it is. But I think.
We are, we are going to have a meeting with the, uh, between the town council and the school committee. Is that, that right? And we're going to discuss and it's on the agenda is going to be, uh, this whole issue. And we're going to get it all straightened out.
Okay. So will that be a public meeting? Because I'll probably be a taxpayer only at that time.
It'll be a pub, public meeting. A workshop between the council and the school committee is a public meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're not invited.
Taxpayer, thirty seven Steer Road, Greenville.
Unless we can persuade you to stay.
But thank you. I just wanted to ask those questions out of curiosity about, you know, ensuring that we're. I know we all have the same goal in mind is to improve our schools for our children. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have. So thank you very much. I know it's not super exciting stuff. But if you have questions.
Richard, we have, I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Not a question, but we, we, me and you need to schedule a meeting between the school committee and the town council to air out some of these issues. In the charter, it says we're supposed to meet four times a year.
Yes.
We need to do that because we shouldn't be in this predicament of who's saying what, who's doing what. If, if we're not at the table, no one knows anything. All there is is rumor.
Don't disagree.
All there is is rumor.
That's why I brought it up because.
So we will, we, by the end of the week, we will send you a day, dates and an agenda to meet, to move the ball down the field. No pun intended.
But I'm pumped. Okay.
All right.
Can it be on Block Island or here I am?
We can go on the island of Stump Pond. Anyone else on the agenda, on the budget? Anne? Jane, Anne, Jane, Jane, Anne? Sorry, Jane.
You remember my sister? Yeah, Jane Ramos, Jane Zangary Ramos. Some of you remember by my maiden name. Thank you. I just want a couple of minutes. I want to share my unique perspective with Smithfield. My family moved to Smithfield in nineteen fifty six. This is almost seventy years ago. I, I graduated Smithfield High School in nineteen eighty three. Um, I bought a home here twenty eight years ago. My two sons have had a K to twelve education here. And I have just completed my thirty sixth year here as a teacher. And I. In those seventy years that my family has been here, there's been so many changes in education in Smithfield. And my parents moved here with two young daughters. There wasn't even a high school yet. And the high school was built in nineteen sixty six, as we heard. Nineteen sixty nine, a new elementary school, La Perch. Nineteen seventy six, a new junior high. Wonderful changes, the sixties and the seventies, lots of changes and exciting times, so much progress in Smithfield. But in the last twenty five years or so, the progress has been slow and the progress has been different. And in fact, what a lot of us as teachers and a lot of us in town have had to do more with less. The towns that surround us, we all know. We hear all about it. They've got new schools built. Cities in our state, in Pawtucket, Central Falls, East Providence, getting beautiful new buildings. What Smithfield has done is added on to each of our schools. So we've had progress there. But again, it was much less than what we had hoped for. We wanted more, we got less. Back in nineteen seventy five, when the new junior high was built, we closed Damon Cook. They were combined and they moved into the old junior high at Old County Road. Um, and because John K. Boyle's name is used over and over again, I have to say, he worked so hard to get that new junior high built. He was a little disappointed though. I don't know. This happens in Smithfield a lot. He was hoping for a junior high that had a gym with seating, but he had to give in a little bit so that, you know, he had to cut corners. Finances were a problem. We had a gym with no seating. We did not get an auditorium. We have the cafeteria. And these things still exist today. Again, we have to do more with less. And it was like that then, and I'm afraid it's still like that now. Recently, we've combined two elementary schools again. Again, no new school to replace anything, but we've added on. I, I know taxpayer hikes are a real concern. Making budgets work is complicated. Things are very expensive. But we mustn't forget, in all those years with previous generations in town, we did our share with new schools, with sewers, with tying in to the city water, Deerfield Park. There were things the town had to do and there were rate hikes to taxpayers. And we did them because we knew we were investing in our town. I just want to speak to Gallagher Middle School because I've been there for the past twenty eight years of my thirty six years. Our programming has had to change so much with budget woes over the years. And again, we've had to do more with less. In order to gain a literacy program that we needed, we lost Family and Consumer Science, also known as HOMAC. We lost that program. We had replaced our industrial arts program with a CAD program, Computer Assisted Design. But when that CAD teacher left, the program ended as well. We had no STEM teacher. We've lost our French program. When the teacher retired, we didn't replace. Our science labs are used by other teachers who need a space, a space to teach in. And they're very out of date anyway. And I have to say, as a science teacher, when I've visited new schools, like the Lincoln Middle School, and I stood in the room that is their science room, I cried because we don't have that. And I knew we weren't ever going to get it. Made me very sad. Again, we're continuing to do more with less. The decisions our town council makes, the decisions you make, have a profound and long lasting impact on our town. And I'm, I'm starting to see that the town of Smithfield is losing its edge. I love my town. I loved growing up here, going to school here. I raised my kids here. I love my stump pond. I love all the hiking trails. I love my town. But doing more with less is not a formula for success. Continuing to have these tiny increases in our education budget or no increases in our budget is negatively affecting this entire town. I, I'm disappointed and deeply saddened by what's happening in our town. And I sincerely hope we can turn this trend around someday soon in our future. Thank you.
Jane, you forgot to say that my dad and your dad played baseball together. You know, Jane's dad was drafted by the Yankees. Right? Cardinals, excuse me. I was close. I was close. But Jane and I have been friends for a long time. We lived the street over from one another. Anyone else like to speak on the budget? You certainly may.
Good evening, members of the Smithfield Town Council. My name is Diane Dietrich and I stand before you tonight, not only as an educator of over twenty eight years in this district, but also as someone who grew up here, attended these very schools, graduated from Smithfield High School in nineteen eighty eight and chose to dedicate my life to serving the students of this community. I'm here because the proposed decision to level fund our school district is not just a financial matter. It is a direct hit to the heart of what makes this town strong, our children, our teachers, and the future we are trying to build. Level funding in a time of rising costs is in reality a cut. It means larger class sizes. It means fewer support services. It means reduced programming, outdated materials and missed opportunities for our students. And it means our teachers, who already give so much with less, will be asked to do even more. This community has always taken pride in its schools. We've produced artists, engineers, nurses, leaders because we've invested in them. But we cannot prepare our children for the challenges of the world if we are not willing to give them the tools they need to succeed. I ask you to think not just as town officials, but as parents, neighbors and members of a community that once believed in giving every child a strong start. We owe it to the next generation to do better than just enough. This funding cut will impact every student in our schools and it will be felt in every classroom. I urge you, please don't move us backward. Don't ask our students to carry the weight of a budget decision they had no say in. We all want what's best for Smithfield and what's best for Smithfield is a strong, supported school district that lifts every student up. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Anyone else? Anyone else go at once?
Everybody, I'm Rob Randall. I think I know everybody up here in one way or another.
Address, please.
It is forty five Maureen Drive.
Thank you.
But tonight, tonight I come here as a parent. I have a daughter in third grade at La Perch and I have a son who will be entering the public schools in a couple of years. Not that I'm counting the days. Those tuition bills are, are rough. But we, we love the public schools here. Their mother graduated from schools here. You know, I think there's a lot of parents here in the group today. And it's hard for us to get here and to stand in front and to talk about the budget and to stay on top of this stuff because there's always a soccer practice. There's always a trombone lesson. There's always something going on. But I think it's really important that we start to look at this and, and talk about that. So I urge everybody to, you know, continue looking at these, continue educating yourselves on how this is going. Because it is tough. It's, it's, it costs a lot of money to educate students in the town. An eighteen thirty eight Horace Mann, Henry Barnard and Catherine Beecher began talking about the concept of common schools. It was unheard of in the globe at that point. The many paying to educate the youngest, the youngest citizens of the country. I bet they had a lot of the same conversations in those meetings that we have today. How are we going to pay for it? How are we going to make the, the ends meet? I don't think that they were talking about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar concession stand. That would probably blow their mind. They educated the whole country in about that. But I digress. But they saw a com, they had a common vision and they got people to believe in their vision that there was no better investment than one in the young people, the future citizens, the future workers, the future teachers, the future police officers, the future council members. There was no better investment than that. You're investing in people. So the return comes really far down the road. But that return is immeasurable. You know, bring in dollars and cents. It's, it's, it's well known that good school departments, good school districts bring revenue. They, because they bring property values up. People sell their houses for more. There's more desire to come into the town. We bring more residents. Public school students, they don't just come into school with nothing. They, there's, there's dollars attached to these students. And if we lose them, which was already mentioned in the very presentation from the folks with, uh, school committee, if we lose them to other districts, they take that with them. It's a bag of cash that they walk over and give to another district. And then we're trying to figure out how to replace it, how to pay for their busing and, and all of that. So, um, you know, just in a pure dollars and cents thing, investments in schools, making it a priority, you know, actually makes a lot of fiscal sense. Maybe not in the immediate moment that we all sit here. It might be, might be a little more difficult, but down the line. But if you want to think, you know, another thing, way that I think about it and my career has been in education and looking at trends, looking at education trends, new ways to educate students, educate students, it gets more expensive all the time because there's new technology, because there's new demands on the workforce and everything like that. But one thing that's always stuck with me is that, a couple of numbers. Fourth grade reading level. So we don't, fourth grade reading level, students who don't read on level by fourth grade are 4% more likely to not graduate high school. So that's fourth grade. So sometimes with students, it feels like we have a lot of time, K through 12, that's 13 years, but we really don't. Their futures are starting to be decided by the way that they are learning and performing by the time they're eight, nine. You want to take it a little bit further? So 4% don't graduate high school, 4% of those students not reading on level by grade four. People who don't graduate high school are 63% more likely to be incarcerated than people who have a bachelor's degree. So now we're looking even farther down the road. So if we have those 4% that are getting set up to not graduate high school, we're looking at increasing incarceration rates. And that's been studied and shown across the country. So that's just more, more police officers, more, you know, that's just more of an investment. It's less people working, less people making a good wage. So I'm thinking, you know, I'm not just even thinking about my eight-year-old, I'm thinking about my eight-year-old's eight-year-old when I start to think about this kind of stuff. So that's all I really had to say today. I really thank you all for your time and thank you all for the presentation and everything and everybody who came out today. So, thanks.
My name is Jenna Ichiba. I am a longtime, since birth, Smithfield resident. I live at 18 Rogelafarm Road. In order to sustain the quality education over time, we need to improve these modest increases to our schools' budget. Level funding shouldn't even be a consideration. School operating budgets cover essential recurring costs, as you all know, teachers' salaries, classroom supplies, utilities, maintenance. If the budget doesn't grow to match these increases, our schools will be forced to make cuts, not to luxuries, but to core services that are impacting learning. You, as our elected, you know, town council, play a pivotal role, as we all know here today. By approving predictable budget increases, you're helping to preserve education quality in our town without creating fiscal shocks down the road. This steady support also shows our educators, our parents, the students, the great people in this room, that the town is committed to maintaining and supporting strong public schools, which in turn supports property values and the long-term health of this community. Smithfield is losing its edge. I thought that was a great one. Without our modest annual adjustments, our schools are forced to stretch the same dollar thinner and thinner, which can quickly lead to larger class sizes, fewer programs, staff reductions, outdated materials, and losing even more children than we already do to private school systems. This erosion impacts students' learning and community confidence in the schools. This is an investment that, as Rob very well played off, that this pays off the community wide. And it's a necessity to preserve existing quality. We must maintain the high standards of education in this town, and our community expects it and deserves it.
I'm Jaclyn Brush Fraser. My address is 99 Indian Run Trail. I've been a resident of Smithfield for five years now and working at La Perche Elementary School and Smithfield High School is what brought me here. So anyways, so I have had the privilege of working in Smithfield for the past eight years as a speech-language pathologist, primarily supporting our students in the intensive special education population. One of my greatest joys and honors has been helping to ensure that every student's voice is heard, whether that voice is verbal or expressed through augmentative and alternative communication, also AAC. For many of our students, this means using high-tech communication devices like iPads with specialized apps that allow them to engage, learn, and connect with the world around them. These devices can be expensive, but they are not a luxury. They are essential. I am grateful to have always had the support of our exceptional special education director, Eileen Crudell, who understands the profound importance of giving all students a way to be heard. In my years here, I have worked with children from all backgrounds, regardless of where they come from or what challenges they face. I have been proud that we, as a district, have been able to provide what they need to communicate, and that is the kind of community we are. Tonight, I am here to urge you to support a responsible budget, one that reflects not just maintaining what we have, but meeting the realities of inflation and the rising cost of providing these critical services. An increase in our budget is not about excess, it's about ensuring that we can continue to meet the needs of all of our students. I was encouraged by the promises made during the last election, commitments to supporting our schools and giving our students what they need to thrive. Now is the time to act on those promises. Investing in our schools is investing in our future. I ask that you consider not just the students whose voices are easily heard, but also the non-speaking students who rely on us to ensure they too have the tools they need. Please, let's continue to be the community that lifts up all children. Thank you.
Anyone else? I knew it. Hi, Tom.
Good evening. Tom Hodgkins, 200 Fronton Pike. I wanted to follow up on a couple of the issues that I asked at the workshop last week. The proposed budget in terms, I want to speak on the revenue piece first. The proposed budget on the revenue, that's Exhibit D. And the proposed budget includes estimated revenue for building permits and other fees at $975,000. That's flat over the last year. What was presented to the town by the Commerce Corporation earlier this year with regards to the tax deal that was offered, or that was actually given to Organogenesis, was the number of benefits the town had received. One of those was $901,000 in building permit fees. And my understanding is from the workshop last week that none of those fees are included as revenue in the 26 budget. Is that correct?
Let me address that. I believe there's going to be an amendment tonight for $350,000, only because they submitted the plans for Phase 1, and Phase 1 will be done during the current fiscal, our current fiscal year, and we will be receiving those funds.
So what was presented in the application on this tax deal was that construction would be completed March 31, 2027, and that facility would be fully operational by July 1, 2027. Is that still the case?
No, it's not going to be the case because of the time it takes to get all the permitting done, and we've been waiting for the architectural plan. So we can't hold anybody to that, especially with the status, again, building materials and whatnot. So they'll get Phase 1 done and they're going to move on to Phase 2.
But that's what was presented to the town in March.
I'm sorry, but that's, they're working at as fast as they can because they want it fully up and running.
But they still get the tax deal, right?
Yeah, but the tax deal had nothing to do with the permit fees. We're still going to get the permit fees.
Well, it was part of the deal of what was going to come to the town.
We can't control construction timelines.
See, this is a problem with these deals because this is just another example of the taxpayer taking it on the chin where, you know, everybody else in this room probably had an assessment that went up this year. That company didn't. That company's assessment is flat, and it's flat over the next three years. And now that building permit fee, the revenue side of it, is not coming in. What the application also said was that they were going to spend $8 million on construction in 2025 and 2026. Is that not the case anymore either?
We don't know. In 20, this is 25?
That's what was in their application, that they were going to spend a total of $80 million over 2025 and 2026.
Did you say 80 or 8?
80, 80.
Yeah, I don't think the value of Phase 1 is quite that much. It's about half that.
So are they going to be brought back before the council to renegotiate that deal that they're given if what their side of it is, is not coming up to what it was based on?
No, that was not part of the deal. Those were the numbers we put together based upon a construction cost. Furthermore, it appears they may be moving their entire operation to Smithfield, which is going to further benefit the town.
Well, it seems like another promise. It's not in the bank while they're getting a reduced tax payment. The town has also promised during that deal from the Commerce Corporation, I brought this up last week at the workshop, $1.3 to $1.4 million in quote "immediate cash benefits", as well as $400,000 from the Commerce Corporation for infrastructure. That's not been received, correct?
Well, the first number they didn't promise does anything.
It's in the minutes.
That was the benefit to the town, to our economy, the first number. The second number, we are in the process of getting the money from them. We have not received it yet.
See, I think, in my view, the issue with this is that by underestimating revenue, you're over-collecting on the taxes and you're collecting more in taxes than you need to fund this budget. And by doing that at the end of the year, whatever the extra is, is just going to be in the wash and the taxpayers are really never going to see a benefit of that of what was promised from this deal. I wanted to address the school capital fund issue. The way this came to the council was, the project was significantly over budget, and the council was presented with a plan in February of 2024, a no-bid plan for a concession stand. And what was stated in the minutes was that no taxpayer funds would be used to pay for that project. Even a month later after that, after the council approved using it with funds that would be reimbursed, the council was then presented with another change order for the OPM's contract that doubled in price for that concession standard that they weren't told about at the first meeting in February, with essentially no explanation of why that had We can't continue to do capital projects like this. We don't have funding in place. We can't afford to do that. I think a lot of people tonight have, you know, raised some well-funded concerns about services in the schools, but my question would be then why do we have a $1 million concession stand if we have a problem funding essential services? Why is that? I think there are ways for the council to potentially address the $767,000 that's outstanding either by way of adjustments to the Capital Reserve Fund or from the reimbursement that's come from the state. I think either of those would be ways to do that. But what's also clear is that that $767,000 that's paid on behalf of the schools is not reflected in either the school's fiscal '24, '25 financial statements, it's not reflected in those audits, and certainly funding or benefits that were received by the schools. So if the position is that that's not going to be coming back, I think that those financial statements and audits need to be amended to reflect that money because right now it's just sort of not reflected anywhere from what we discussed last week in the budget. So I think that there are ways to address that. I think the schools should consider that with terms in regards to the Capital Reserve Fund because we can't continue to fund projects or to plan for projects without funding. We have another project coming up. We need to figure out where the funding is going to come from before those things are, those projects are approved and be sure what the cost is. The last thing that I wanted to address the council on was, again, the situation with the libraries. The libraries account for $1.7 million of the budget this year. There's a recommended 2% increase for the libraries. As you know, the libraries have not given us audited financial statements for several years. The libraries have not given us even unaudited financial statements for several years or budget-to-actual numbers for several years. We have no idea how that $1.7 million is spent every year, and that's just, it's really ridiculous. You know, if you go and get a bag of groceries, you get a receipt for it. Everybody in this room is paying tax dollars for that $1.7. We have no idea what it was spent on. So I'm unclear why there's a 2% increase recommended for that. It's unclear to me. It's certain that the trustees had no part in this budget because they weren't involved with the Budget and Financial Review Board or with the town manager. It's unclear how much the directors of the library were involved. They know that they did not come to any of the Financial Review Board meetings. In respect to the Greenville Library, they've reported, at least according to their minutes, we don't have their financial statements, but they've had a surplus over the past two years. So it questions me why they are getting an increase this year. In addition to the surplus that had been reported, or was reported earlier this year for fiscal '25, is that they were over-budget on the legal expense line item. And in their meeting minutes for tomorrow night, they have an executive session item for litigation. And it sounds, from the budget workshop last night, that the town has not received any information about what the implications of that may be. Is that correct?
No.
So I think that calls into question even level funding, these folks, but in regards to libraries, we're not getting the information that we asked for from them. They're not operating in a way that, having their financials reviewed, libraries under Rhode Island general laws cooperate in two ways. It can either be a separate nonprofit entity and not get taxpayer dollars, or if they do get taxpayer dollars, there's certain requirements that they have to follow. One of those requirements that they have to follow is that the trustees are appointed by the town council. At this point, none of the trustees of those libraries are appointed by the town council. So I would suggest that any allocation to the libraries this year is contingent upon appointment of trustees by the town council, consistent with Rhode Island general laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And I know by the end of the night, you'll be pleasantly surprised. Anyone else? Anyone else go once? Or twice? Close the public hearing. Councilman Iain Harty.
We good? We good with this?
Let Councilwoman Bois first and then you.
You want to speak first?
Oh, go ahead.
I'll make the motion. I move to amend the FY 2026 budget as follows: to add $25,000 in capital funds to the senior center budget for the purpose of building repairs and expanded storage space; to fund the Greenville Library at the same rate as the current FY 24, '25 budget; to fund the East Smithfield Library at the same rate as the current FY 24, '25 budget; to increase the building permit fee revenue by $350,000 generated from the Organogenesis Phase 1 building project; to increase impact fee revenue by $100,000 to fund the Parks Department line item called fertilizer seeding and maintenance of recreational fields; to reduce the FY 25, '26 increase in school department funding from $550,000 to $275,000, recognizing that the House Finance Committee has added $183,154 to the school department's state aid line item for Smithfield, which is additional funding that will go directly to the school department; to add $275,000 to the fire department capital expenditures as payment number one of four for a new fire pumper, engine two, to be paid for by the revenue from rescue billing; and to add $195,312 in general state aid to the town's operating budget.
We have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing done. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes, aye aye. The budget passes. As amended. Item B, conduct a public hearing to consider and discuss, act upon amendments to Chapter 347 of the Code of Ordinances. And I'll hold it out for a second while everybody leaves.
I mean...
We'll go to the next meeting. We got a agenda together. Three of us. Item number B, conduct a public hearing to consider and discuss, act upon amendments to Chapter 347 Code of Ordinances entitled Yard Sales, Sidewalk Sales, Flea Markets, sponsored by Councilmember Tobby. I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak on item B? Item B? Item B? Item B? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tavi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just go over the quick changes in this ordinance from what was in the packet that the public sees. There are just three. I don't know if I should do the changes first. Well, I'll just say, you know, this came up during a workshop during the last council when we talked about licenses. During that last term, we, the council established an initiative called the Ordinance Working Group where we clean up and update the Code of Ordinances. So that's essentially how this came about, plus I do all the yard sales. So side note, I did run this by the chief of police and he saw, saw no issues with the amendments. So the major changes to this is basically before, you know, it was required that you need a permit to hold the yard sale, but I guess that hasn't been enforced in quite some time, according to the clerk. So this was done to match current practice. And as we always say, less government is good government. And the other changes include lowering the fine from up to 100 per day for violations to up to $50 per day for violations, in which would also be included, excuse me, adjudicated in municipal court. Prohibiting signage on street and traffic signs, increasing the number of annual sales from two to 12, extending the advertising of the sale from 24 hours in advance to 48 hours, and adding the provision to include if there are any traffic safety or fire hazards, then the respective department, police or fire, has the ability to shut down the sale at their discretion. Obviously, this is not a big issue, but has some extra time, you know, in the midst of all these pressing issues as well. So just, so I'll make the, the changes from what is in the public packet to what I just made today are that I'm deleting casual sales by minors in the definition so that wouldn't apply to them. And then we also added, we're deleting permitted yard sales because we no longer need a permit. And really, the fine, the fine, I didn't realize that the section with the fine include was, included the entire chapter, but we're just dealing with yard sales. So we're just making it so the yard sales, you can't find them more than $50. Everything else stays the same. So with that, I'll just make a motion to, I'm sorry?
Adopt the ordinance.
Adopt the ordinance as amended with those three changes I had mentioned.
Second. Any discussion? I, I have something I'd like to say. On item A underneath 347-6 Yard Sales, in the number 12 you have there. Here's my, here's my concern. A lot of people now are hurting. Okay? A lot of people are hurting financially. And if we limit one yard sale per month, it could be taking away someone's extra money that they make at a yard sale. Would you consider doing something else rather than the 12?
Well, it was two, so I thought 12, 12 months a year. They're not going to have it in the winter, so they can have a few in the summer and the spring. That's what they typically have it anyway. So you're thinking there's like at least four or five months that you wouldn't be having them anyway. So you could have multiple.
How do we, how do we keep track of that line?
You don't.
No.
Then that's really the whole point is to match what the current practice is, which is they don't require a permit, even though the ordinance does, you know, so.
So nobody needs to take out a permit?
No.
No, no, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just trying to figure this out.
So technically, you know, they wouldn't know if you have it more than 12.
Basically, no one in the town realized that they needed a permit for a yard sale.
I've never done that. No, exactly. It doesn't make sense. It's a silly thing.
So we need to fix that ordinance.
So unless somebody's watching and keeping the tally, you know.
I would just add that it may be helpful to have some number in there. And I'm thinking at some point, if somebody makes this a business out of their house, that you have some constraints here because at that point they become a business. So whether the number's 12 or something else, I can see the need. You know, I, I get you not to limit it too much, but I can see somebody making a practice out of this.
That was exactly my thinking. That was exactly my thinking.
We've seen it happen a couple of times.
Take advantage, yeah.
Can I just ask, Mr. President? Was, this was previously monitored by the police or this is a new addition to be monitored? Are you, you're proposing that this, the littering portion of this be monitored by the police? Is that accurate or no?
No, 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 no. It's, it just says if you leave a sign on a pole, listen, this stuff is really not heavily monitored at all, right? But it's just, I added a few other things. The main thing was getting rid of the permit. But I, you know, I looked at a bunch of other ordinances in other towns, so I got rid of, you know, I added a few things. But the littering thing, it's just, it's considered litter. So, you know, therefore after 48 hours, if you don't take it down, then you're up for a fine. But is that really going to happen? I mean, most likely not. I mean.
Do you know if this, what the littering fine, like is it the same as the littering fine or is it different?
No, this is totally different. This is up to 50. I don't know what the littering fine is. I don't even know if we have an ordinance, to be honest.
We must.
The state, yeah, the state.
Yeah, I don't believe there is one in.
Okay.
I have to double check.
Okay, but this is, you're saying it's completely separate and apart from littering?
Oh, totally. Oh, yeah, this is not defining littering. It's just considered as litter.
Okay, and you're not, you're not presuming that this is going to be a heavy lift on police on building on zoning, okay?
Oh, gosh, no.
Okay.
Especially if you take away the permit and, you know.
I just wasn't sure if there was some, like something that behind the scenes that you heard of that needs to be monitored, but that's not, doesn't seem like that's the case.
No, absolutely not. I consider myself a yard sale aficionado and really people, you know, there's really no problems.
Fair enough. I've never, have you taken a permit out of curiosity? Did you know about this?
No.
Okay, me?
Absolutely not.
If I could just add, Mr. President, the other thing, when our zoning officer goes around and we get a complaint about signage and it is against the ordinance, he just takes it and we dispose of it.
Right.
Makes life a lot easier for everybody.
Yeah.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Item C, conduct a public hearing to consider and discuss the act upon approving eight one-day special event licenses for Smithfield Parks and Rec. Department located Smith Appleby House 220 Stillwater Road to hold summer concert series 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM with the following Wednesday, June 25th, Wednesday, July 2nd, Wednesday, July 9th, Wednesday, July 16th, Wednesday, July 23rd, Wednesday, July 30th, Wednesday, August 6th, and Wednesday, August 13th. All special licenses in Smithfield Parks and Rec Department are subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances. I open up the public hearing. Anyone on the public hearing? Anyone on the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Move that the Smithfield Town Council approve the previously stated eight one-day special event licenses for Smithfield Parks and Rec.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Conduct a public hearing and consider to discuss the act upon approving two one-day special event licenses of Smithfield Parks and Rec Department for two food truck events at one William Hawkins Trail on the following dates, Wednesday, June 18th and Tuesday, July 1st. All special event licenses for the Smithfield Parks and Rec Department are subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances. I open up the public hearing. Anyone on the public hearing? Anyone on the public hearing? Yes, sir.
I'm sure what we are waiting for, a special hearing for a food license on that, on that day.
That's coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Sit tight. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
With that, no, you're good. Second.
Motion for a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Licenses. Number nine, consider to discuss act upon approving annual one-day pool table license as applied and subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances. Last resort. I'll entertain a motion. Let everything in order?
It is.
Entertain a motion to approve the license.
So moved.
Any discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Item B, consider to discuss the act upon approving the application for a temporary extension of a Class D full privilege license premises on the Smithfield Sportsman's Club to include the parking lot at 14 Walter Carey Road for the annual field day to be held Sunday, September 21st, 2025 from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations, local ordinances, and conditional upon alcohol crowd control agreement with the Smithfield Police. And the rain date will be Sunday, September 28th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Chief, are they okay with you on this?
Yes, they are.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Item C, consider to discuss the act upon approving annual renewal of one holiday license as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances, closed department stores. I'll entertain a motion. Everything in order, Lynn?
Yes.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Item D, consider to discuss the act upon approving the sidewalk sales license for Blackbird Farm LLC, Blackbird Farm, to hold farmers market every Sunday beginning June 22nd, 2025 to October 26th, 2025, with the hours of operation at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on a property located at 6600 Spike, as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances. Lynn, are we all set with all that paperwork?
All in order.
All in order. I'll entertain a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Item E, consider to discuss the act upon approving the annual renewal of one massage establishment license as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations, Evelyn Massage Therapy. That is at 600 Putnam Pike, Suite 202. Lynn, is everything in order?
It is.
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Second. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Item F, consider act upon approving annual renewal of one massage therapy license as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations. Holly Byrne, working at Evelyn Massage Therapy, 600 Putnam Pike. That was what we had a question on last meeting. We're all set with all that?
It's been moved and it is up to date until 27.
All right, great. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Item G, consider to discuss the act upon approving a new peddler's license for Robert Lavoy, Diggy Dog, Foreside Lane, Smithfield Rhode Island to sell hot dogs, registration WS 924, Seven Whaling Trail, Norwigan City, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances. Helen, everything in order?
It is.
Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion. So, whoops. Can't do the fee. I know there was a question. Who, who had the question? Come on, sir.
Hi, what we were looking for also is to waive the $100 fee because it's a total fundraiser for.
For the ability to reach.
Building rich foundation. I, I own Diggy Dog and I have a autistic niece.
Mm-hmm.
Who, Glenn and her foundation does a lot of services.
Yeah.
So I said, I will donate my time and 100% of proceeds are going to that. So I don't know if the town would waive the $100 fee as opposed to taking away essentially.
All right, so if I waive your $100 fee, I got to waive everybody else's $100 fee. So what I'm going to do is I will give her a check for $100 so she can pay the fee.
Very generous. Very generous.
You okay with that?
Yes.
You're welcome. Any more discussion? Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
You have my contact, so send me an email where the check needs to go and I'll send you the check.
Very good.
You're welcome. Not that, that way it's dying, yeah? Item H, consider to discuss the act upon the annual renewal of one mobile food truck license as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances, Bellybusters. Lynn, everything in order with Mr. Belly?
It is.
Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Item 10, old business. There is none. New business. Item 11, consider to discuss the act upon appropriation of tax levy resolution for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. Also, one of the bovis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Smithfield Town Council hereby approve pass, passage of the appropriation and tax levy resolution for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, and to approve the motions and resolutions as amended based on the actions earlier this evening by the town council.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Item B, consider to discuss the act upon granting an easement toward Rhode Island Energy, Camp Shepherd property for the upgraded maintenance of the service line director.
Good evening. Gene Allen, Director of Public Works. As you know, Camp Shepherd has a electrical service. It's primary, it's not secondary. So Rhode Island Energy is willing to upgrade and maintain that line. So this provides them an easement to go on the property to get to all the poles. There's 10 poles that one of them actually crosses the pond that's up there also. This will maintain that line in perpetuity by Rhode Island Energy. We would then, as we decide what to do with the buildings, upgrade the secondary and connect into this line through the transformer.
Thank you.
Does this go, you can ask the same question? No. Does this go through the lake?
It goes over the lake.
Oh, over the, oh, okay, they're over, they're underground.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it, is it going over the lake now?
Yes, it's an existing pole line.
So there is no change to the existing footprint?
For the most part, they're going to keep it the same way. I mean, the one pole might be moved over a little bit until they string everything over, but essentially it's the same. And I think they're going to add a couple of guy wires.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Item C, consider to discuss the act upon authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract with OMNIA Partners Contract 254, Rehick Pacific Company of Orlando Flora for the purchase of one 65-gallon refuse, 165-gallon recycling carts for the total of $15,950.
Mr. President, I'd like to comment first.
May.
I'd ask the DPW, I know you had a question about the expense of these, and he did do some research on it, so I'll let him explain.
Okay.
There is a difference between what the two towns are using.
Primarily the question that was asked about another community that has a lower price. My understanding in doing some research is they are less quality than what we have. When they originally specked out the carts that we use, it was prior to me, but they did a good job. They're good durable carts that we do have.
They are.
Most of them at this point are beyond the 10-year warranty and they're still operating strong. But, you know, at some point in time, we'll have to look at upgrading, you know, not upgrading, but changing them out as more and more, you know, start to get damaged over time. But this is a higher quality. It has a better wheels that can be replaced, the covers, the hole. If you think about it, the way they pick them up, there's two arms that come down. It squeezes it, it picks it up, it throws it in and then puts it back down. It's a lot of duress on that rigid plastic, so to speak. And from what I understand, the ones in the community you had mentioned, they've had them for a year, they're already starting to have problems.
Are we making a profit on these or is it just cost?
It's not set up as an enterprise to bring or, it all comes out of the general fund.
So if it costs 30, that's what we're charging, 30?
You're talking about?
No, we, we own the carts.
Yeah, the trash bins.
Yeah, so the recycling bins are free, all right? And then, but because that saves us costs of having to pay for a tipping fee.
Right.
For recycling. The carts themselves, we provide for free of course for the 65-gallon. If people want to upgrade or have an additional cart, then we do charge additional funds for that.
So the cot that we, we charge for?
Yep.
Are we making money on the residents on that cot that we charge for?
So the cost that we charge, if somebody comes in for an extra cot or if they want to upgrade to a 95, that cost that we cover, that we get, it's for the additional trash that's being tipped. That, that was a calculation that was done some years ago. It needs to be updated to make sure that we are. That was part of the, in one of the proposals that I had that we're not, we're quote, over at this point. But that would be part of that to make sure that what we are charging is recouping the cost.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye, nays, ayes, have it. Thank you, Director. Item D, consider to discuss the act upon authorizing a disability pension for a police department employee. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to that the Smithfield Town Council authorize the filing of an accident retirement application by Police Officer Gary Masterson for an accidental disability retirement.
You have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor? Aye, nays, ayes, have it. Item E, consider to discuss the act upon authorizing requests or proposals to furnish or install electronic messaging board at the Smithfield High School on behalf of the Smithfield School Department. There's no one here? School Department? Make a motion, we put it on. Hang on one second.
Tom, are you going to speak for the school department?
Definitely not. They might be waiting to throw tomatoes at me when I leave.
Probably.
Can I ask a question or do you need a, are you going to make a motion?
I was, but I'll, I'll give you the floor.
Okay, thank you. Tom Hodgson's turned in front of Pike. My question was going to be, what is the funding source for this? I don't think the funding source was identified. And based on my review of the last school committee's meeting, they had not identified a complete funding source. So I think that when it comes back to the council, it should have a funding source and it identified. This is kind of repeating what's happened in the past.
It seems to me that they bailed out very quickly. And maybe they didn't want to talk about this. So make a motion, we put it on the next agenda.
Mr. President, if I may, it looks like it was, it was the class gift from 2020 with their, it looks like it was donated by the class of 2020. Like, you know how, you know how when you finish, like they're extra funds, they buy a gift?
I just want to make sure because sometimes they don't basically.
I'm sorry, sometimes it's not honest.
Yeah, sometimes it's not on the system.
And I think that was going to be a chunk of it, but that was not going to cover it all of it. So the other part is what we need to identify, right?
That was my question as well, correct? Also, it appears to be anyway.
It's like a, it's like a foot long sandwich. Six inches are paid for and the other six, we'll find out where we're going to get it from.
I'll make a motion to table to the next meeting and I guess that's the July meeting.
I have a second? All's in favor?
Second.
Aye, nays, ayes, have it. Public comment. Just say your name, please, and where you live.
Gary Tocconi in 6 OMS Drive, Greenville. You know, we always seem to sometimes gravitate to negative things, whether they're with town government, state government, federal government. But there's a few things that I've noticed in the town that have been in a positive way. One of them is our new town manager. I'm glad he's our town manager. I think he did a great job turning this fire department into a very positive way. I don't think too many of us knew him. He came from a community in Coventry that was in disarray. I don't think a lot of us had the confidence in him, but he proved a lot of us wrong. And he did a great job with the fire department, turning that around, getting the men all on board. And congratulations, Chief, on being our new town manager. I think we had a good pick there. I wrote some notes. My father passed away 2013. And we relied on that fire department a lot in those days. And when they showed up to our house when my father was sick for a while, it was like the cavalry showed up. There wasn't, I can't think of one group that showed up to our house that I could say, oh, boy, we got the B team. Every group that showed up. And I knew a lot of them and I used to say, oh, boy, here comes this guy. And but they, they were good. They were all good. And now we go to again with my mother. And again, this fire department is unbelievable. They are truly the best. And I can't say enough about the way they respond, the way they act. And you know what? I don't even know them anymore. They come through that front door. There might be, a lot of them I don't even know. They're all new guys. They are so good, so respectful. I can't say enough about them.
They're the best in the state.
They are excellent. In, in November of 2017, these are positive things that I'm just want to leave everybody with. In 2017, Randy Rossi reached out to me and said, Gary, will you be the interim public works director? And I said, Randy, how long? He said, would you give me six months? I says, at that time, I had a full-blown out construction company. I did a lot of subcontract work for J. H. Lynch &amp; Sons. I went and saw Steve Lynch, Sr. I said, Mr. Lynch, this is what's going on. He said, go do it. Go do it for six months. If it doesn't work out, you come right back. So he made it easy for me. I said, Randy, I'll do it for six months. And when I, when I was there, I witnessed a lot of things. And it was a very difficult place to work when you're in the private industry and you go into a municipality to witness some of the things. I mean, I have a notebook like this. Every day I wrote something down. I really want to throw it out, but I can't yet. The things I witnessed there were upsetting as a taxpayer. But I went there today for the first time since I left that property on May 1st, 2018. I went there in November of 2017. I spent six months. And after the second week, I called Randy Rossi and said, Randy, I will not be applying for this job and I don't want to take the town's money. So if you want to get someone quicker, go ahead. And I stayed there six months. And he said to me, can you make one major change before you leave? I said, give me a few days. And I thought about it. And I said, Randy, I got it. He said, what is it? I said, make Ralph Farah a foreman. And I got resistance from someone in this town hall. And I said, holy moly, I can't believe that there's someone not in approval of this. Anyway, it took a while and he became a foreman. And now he's the assistant director there. And another great choice for the town. And I went there today for the first time to throw some computers away. And the first one who came to the desk, and I didn't know this girl, was a girl named Laura. And I'm going to try to say this because I know the past of that place. This girl was excellent. She was like a joy to speak to. She was pleasant. She was nice. She reminded me, and a lot of people don't know her, Carolyn Calton. Because Carolyn Calton was one of the best. And this girl reminded me of her. The next one, when I went in to talk about the computer, throwing the computers out, somebody's ears perked out. It's probably one of the best municipal workers we have in this town. A girl that takes her job to a passion that very few have. And that was Mrs. Shabbat. She's excellent at that recycling. She takes it to heart and she does an excellent job. And then Ralph came out of his office. So what I'm trying to say is, when I left there today, I said, oof, wasn't this a little bit of breath of fresh air? To what I witnessed in six months over there? It was nice to see those three there. And, you know, we've, we've made some other great hires. Todd Manning, what a job he did with COVID. And he's great. My neighbor, the chief of police, Eric Dolan, whose father volunteered in this town like, like a lot of the rest of us. So we are moving forward, even though some people think we're still, you know, we are moving forward and we've, I just want to, I just want to leave here with a positive type thing. And that's why I stay there all night like this. But so.
So Gary, Gary.
I got to go back to my mother.
Listen, we already passed the budget, so neither, neither of these guys are going to get any more raises. That's number one.
Well, that's another question. Look at him for that. That's odd. I'm an MCD, no college degree. Leave these guys up there.
Gary, wait, 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 Gary. How many computers did you bring to get recycled?
I think three.